Good morning. Town of Montgomery Annual Town Meeting 2020. The legal voters for the Town of Montgomery and the company of Franklin are hereby notified and warned to meet in the Town Hall and set down on Tuesday, the 3rd of March, 2020 A.D. at 9:00 in the forenoon to act on the following business as with Article 1 to elect a moderator.
I'll make two Murphy.
Any other nominations? Those with a nomination to close the process, all those in favor of voting for two Murphy as your moderator, if you say aye.
Aye.
If you don't say no, the ayes have it and you've elected two Murphy as your moderator for this ensuing year. Thank you. Our local representative, Felicia LaFleur, is here and if there is no objection, we can call her forward to give a report on what's happening in our field here. No objection having been heard, so we have suspended the rules. Felicia, if you were here. Is there a mic up there somewhere?
Yep. Here you go.
Hello. Hello, good morning, everybody. Good morning. Because it seems many faces here. I'm just going to give you guys kind of a quick update on this session of Montgomery so far. We're about halfway through and it has been a lot more than last year. We kicked it off following up on a lot of the vetoes that came out last year. So the minimum wage and the KCMV vote both came to KCMV's in the first two weeks of the session. Minimum wage was last week. KCMV, the governor's veto was obtained by one vote and on the flip side of that coin, minimum wage was overridden by this vote. So that took up a lot of the floor time for Montgomery. We've also been working on some other really big ticket items such as the Global Warming Solutions Act, which passed by a committee of citizens in Jardine House and is over in the Senate. We're working on some Act 250 reforms, which, I didn't bat on that enough because they get a lot of great things in the bill, but it's got a lot of energy within there. So I did not support it in the House version, but I'm working actively to set it and kind of trap that into a little bit more accountability for individuals who have to go through the process. So that we're seeing both reform for the individual as well as the exemptions for our villages, our downtown, trails, and a lot of our working lands. On top of all of kind of the really big ticket items that we're seeing on the floor coming out each week, I am a member of the Corrections and Institutions Committee and we came into the session under a lot of the reports on our correctional facilities and some of the really troubling things that we're holding on there and are holding on there. We also have very new commissioner corrections. So a lot of our committees have been devoted towards understanding more of what the issues that we're facing are as well as starting to address them in what might seem as frustratingly small pieces, but we can't tackle it all head on because it is a pretty systemic issue. So we're working with the commissioners to address what we can on the front end and as a committee working jointly with the Senate, we are working on adjustments for the Investment Act, which will kind of restructure our prisons to hold people who need to be there and build up kind of our community supports for the ones that don't need to be incarcerated. So that's taken up quite a lot of committee time and then same as with last year, our committee has the capital budget. So that is a two-year budget cycle. This year, we're doing our adjustments. So bringing out what projects are under budget, any of those that are over budget, where we need to address the timeframe and monies. And because we, in remarks, even though our budget is decreasing, still get pretty good freedom for our bonds that we sell, we have about $11 million in that budget to reassign to new projects we weren't able to fund last year. Now, capital monies can only be used like the state credit card. They can only be used for certain things as defined. So the project has the last 20 years to ask to be substantial and more of that green water concrete. Unless for policy initiatives. One of the big things we're looking to fund is the Monroe Valley Rail Trail. That came in and the governor's recommends. It's a four-year project. Statutorily, we can give two years' worth of money. So we're working with transportation committees to make sure that they have that appropriation in full so that they can start that work and pull down the federal dollars and we can have 91 miles of trail. And that connects to the existing rail trails. So kind of opening up opportunities there. We're hopefully going to have the capital bill picked out of committee by 18th and then we are going to continue working on just a couple of other really housekeeping bills that are changing statutes and allowing authorities for different states, agencies, and their employees. And if you guys, in a quick nutshell, what I've been working on down there, but there's also a written update that I put on the table at the back of the room. If you guys kind of want to read into it or if you have any questions, all of my contact information is on there and I'd love to hear from you. So if you guys have any questions, I'd love to take them now briefly, if that's possible.
Yeah, go for it, yeah. Although could you just make one announcement? If we could have the door shut, our fuel budget line is going up as I walk.
We could shut the door, that would be great.
We can let them in first, but.
Titus. Titus Pressler from Hill West Road. Last year's Montgomery Town Meeting instructed our legislators to lead on the issue of climate change. Can you talk a bit about how you have led on climate change in the legislature over the past year?
Absolutely. So the Global Warming Solutions Act, H688, is the biggest climate change bill that's come to us so far. And that worked with putting some teeth behind the Paris Accord, which a lot of people to stay into after the United States pulled out. That sets certain emission goals, no more than 26% reduction on our 1998 emissions by That bill has great intent and I care deeply about our climate and I want that to be in a way, this and true, but there was a pretty big piece of that bill that I couldn't support because it just rung a really serious legislation that has taken away authority from the lawmakers. So a big part of that bill was to establish a commission and that 22-person commission was to work with the agency down to resources to develop a plan to address kind of change in the goals that we had set forward for the Paris Accord, which is almost how they did with clean water. We asked the board or commission to work with the agency and get us a plan. However, in H688, they didn't come back to the legislature for approval. They just came to us for funding. So the plan that was drafted had no review by any elected officials and that almost mirrors directly what was done with that 46. And I cannot vote for something that while it's set goals that we agree with and while you've asked me to support that, takes away my authority to be a voice for you at any point forward in the process. So that's something that again, I have to work with our Senate body to really bring back in the process in which the plan needs to be approved by the legislature. And with that, I could support that because with that, I can represent your voices, but without that, ceding the authority and ceding your guys' authority to have any input on that when it comes back in two years, I can't see it as a good thing. It's only burned us in the past. So working actively on that and being completely upfront with the bills that we have before us, that's the only one that's come forward from passage. There are others that are percolating through both sides of the legislature, but none that I really anticipate seeing the limelight such as this one did. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
What?
Yes, that's.
What?
Thank you.
And give it back to Charlie.
I guess not. Okay. Thanks, Felicia.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't see him. Are you still going to hang out until like 10:00 or?
I'm going to try to.
Yeah, just come up and find me if you find her yet.
This is a general rules of procedure. In order to participate in today's meeting, you must be a registered voter in the Town of Montgomery. You can't speak at this meeting if we suspend the rules and give you that permission. Otherwise, please refrain from voting or debating any of the issues today. For procedure, we'll, I'll point to someone. If you want to be recognized, please raise your hand or stand up. I'll point to that person. Please, let's get your name legibly so the town clerk can record it and then proceed with your comments. So let's proceed with the meeting. Article 2, to accept reports of the town officers. Is there any motion?
I'll make a motion to do that.
Your motion is moved to accept and moved in seconded.
Second.
Moved in seconded and we accept the reports of the town officers. Any discussion or debate? Charlie.
All right, just to have two typos to point out. One is on page 15. First typo is on page 15, under expenses, the second paragraph, first line, $38,000. That should be 31,200. The number isn't reflected correctly in warning in the budget, but there's a typo in that letter. So that should be 31,200, not 3800. The second typo is on page 28. Town of Montgomery report unreserved funds. That should be 2019, not 2018.
Any other discussion? Questions?
Well, on the reports of the town.
Please identify yourself with the clerk.
Okay, Joe Sherman. I live in the village on credit commission. My question, report to the town officers. I wonder if you could get us just a brief update on where we are on state and federal help for the Halloween event. But where are we at?
Yeah, so we've been pursuing a few different avenues for assistance there. The main one is through FEMA. So Montgomery is now listed as part of the disaster. We attended the regional meeting a few weeks ago in St. Albans. At this point, the next step is going to be for the team from FEMA to come up and meet with us here in town and go over our book, essentially the details, all the damages we've had. And that will essentially start kicking the process into reimbursements and then looking forward to additional repairs we have this coming spring. We also looked at pursuing some other funding through USDA, through a program that helps assess private landowners with some damage. Unfortunately, we just got word this week that none of the properties we visited are going to be qualifying for that. So at this point, FEMA is essentially our best and only bet as far as financial assistance with repairs.
Any other questions? Mary?
Moral obligation on page 17, at the top of page. You know, last night we discussed this and I wasn't clear. Last year, it was forward to conduct a feasibility study.
Yep.
And then the next line, that we had contracted to conduct a preliminary engineering work.
Yeah.
So I noticed that USDA called one thing and revolving on that. So the bottom line is, and I didn't understand, what is the wording in the contract? Is the contract words for a feasibility study or for a screener?
So the actual contract with the engineer is for both. And that's because to get the different sources of funding that we need, the two different sources call them different things. It's essentially the same end product, but one source of funding refers to it as a feasibility study and the second source refers to it as preliminary engineering, but in effect, the product is the same product. Yep. And the main thing too is that this is being paid for through grant funding that will, if the town does not proceed with the project, there will be no out-of-pocket expense to the town. So before any expenditure that would come into the town is made, we would have a public meeting to review everything with the town and essentially have an affirmative vote to move forward before we have any expenditures related to this. On that topic, what we're talking about it this Thursday at 6:00 P.M. at the Public Service Building, Oil Tanner, who is the engineering firm we're working with, is going to be presenting what they call a 60% deliverable on the project. What this is going to include is some additional information about wastewater projections as well as some preliminary schematics of different alternatives for some of the streetscape work that goes in concert with this project. So I'd encourage anybody who's interested to come Thursday night, 6:00 P.M. in the Public Service Building to kind of see where things are at with the project. Again, before we decide to move forward with any actual work or any expenditures that would be an expense on the back of the town, we bring it back to the voters. So I would expect another town meeting at some point in the next three months or so to review the final project from the engineer and vote in the affirmative or not to move forward.
Any other questions or comments? If not, let's proceed with the warning. It's been moved and seconded that the town accept the reports of the town officers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. The ayes have it and we voted to accept the reports of the town officers. Article 3, to elect the remaining town officers as required by law. 380, a select person for a term of two years by ballot. Nomination, please.
I nominate Alyssa Hardy.
Alyssa Hardy has been nominated. Other nominations?
I nominate Leanne Barnard.
Leanne Barnard has been nominated. Any other nominations? If there are no further nominations and if there's no objection, then we close the nomination procedure. No objection having been heard, we close the nomination procedure. We have two nominees, Alyssa Hardy and Leanne Barnard. Would you like to say a few words in your own behalf, Alyssa?
And I am in favor. I think Leanne is rerunning right now, so I don't want any.
You want to decline the nomination?
Yes.
I listed a decline nomination. We now have one nominee, Leanne Barnard. If there is no objection, we can forego the long ballot procedure by having the town clerk cast one ballot for Leanne Barnard. All those in favor have had the town clerk cast one ballot for Leanne Barnard? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. Town clerk shall cast one ballot for Leanne Barnard. Though it hasn't been cast.
Congratulations.
We would like Leanne Barnard as our town clerk. I'm sorry, as our. For a term of two years. Congratulations. Article B, a select person for a term of three years by ballot. Nomination, please.
I'll try again. Alyssa Hardy.
Alyssa, okay. Other nominations?
Suzanne Dalwa.
Excuse me?
Suzanne Dalwa.
Suzanne Dalwa. Other nominations?
Ken Miller.
Ken Miller? Other nominations?
That was Larry nominated Kenny.
Who?
Sarah.
Sarah?
He's documented.
Yeah, I can't hear him, but.
Darren Ruppert.
Darren Ruppert is declining. He needs to retire. We have three nominations. If there are no other nominations, if no objection, we can cease the nominating procedure. No objection having been heard. We'll settle on the three nominees, which are Alyssa Hardy, Suzanne Dalwa, and Ken Miller. Alyssa, would you like to say?
I already received my nomination.
You're not being nominated. We're down to two. Suzanne Dalwa.
I accept my nomination. What, I don't know. I guess, thank you for nominating me. I've been working with the select board for almost a little over a year since I've been here, so kind of familiar with what's going on here. I'm a local, I've worked for Ray's here in Montgomery and I see a thrill to work with the town.
I'm going to decline, thank you.
You can decline the nomination?
Yes.
Okay, so once again, we're down to just one nominee. If there's no objection, we can have the town clerk cast one ballot for the select person for a term of three years. No objection having been heard. We'll direct the town clerk to cast one ballot for Suzanne Dalwa for a select person for a term of three years. One ballot having been passed, we've elected Suzanne Dalwa as a select person for a term of three years by ballot. Article 3D, Alyssa for a term of three years by ballot. Nomination, please.
No, a liquid tax collector.
Oh, I'm sorry, 3C, a liquid tax collector for a term of three years by ballot. Nomination, please.
Anita Woodward.
Anita Woodward has been nominated. Other nominations?
Anita Woodward.
Anita Woodward has been nominated. Any other nominations? If there are no further nominations, we can cease the nominating procedure. No objection having been heard. And also, if no one objects, we can direct the town clerk to cast one ballot for Anita Woodward to serve as a tax collector for a term of three years. Ballot having been cast, we've elected Anita Woodward, we are liquid tax collector for a term of three years. Congratulations. 4D, Alyssa for a term of three years by ballot. Nomination, please.
We're nominating Genevieve Gill, our assistant town clerk.
Genevieve Gill. Again, this is a valid vote and there's no objection, we can cease the nominating procedure and direct the town clerk to cast one ballot for Genevieve Gill. Town clerk has cast one vote for Genevieve Gill to serve as our lister for a term of three years by ballot. Genevieve Gill has been elected as a lister for a term of three years. Congratulations. 3E, Alyssa for a term of three years by ballot.
We'd like to nominate Wendy Howard.
Wendy Howard. Other nominees? Again, this being a valid vote, there is no objection, we can cease the nominating procedure and direct the town clerk to cast one ballot for Wendy Howard to serve as a lister for a term of three years. Town clerk can do cast one ballot for Wendy Howard. She's been elected a lister for a term of three years. Congratulations. 3F, an agent to prosecute and defend suits who is a nominee interested for a term of one year. Nomination, please.
Barry Cade.
Barry Cade has been nominated. Other nominees? If so, if not, we'll cease the nominating procedure. All those in favor of having Barry Cade serve as our town agent to prosecute and defend suits of which the town is interested, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. The ayes have it and we've elected Barry Cade as our town agent. Congratulations. We need one of our grand jurors for a term of one year. Dominations?
Nominate the select board.
Select board has been nominated. Other nominations? If not, we'll cease the nominating procedure and all those in favor of having the select board serve as our grand jurors for a term of one year, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. The ayes have it and we've elected our select board to serve as our grand jurors. Congrats.
Excuse me, what's the function of grand jurors?
Is that board like the?
I have no idea. Yeah, in all honesty, I'm not 100% sure. It's never come up, but I assume we would hear specific cases brought before us. Barry, you're our legal.
That's what I'm trying to remember.
All right, just wondering.
So are we.
I think it's initiating some kind of prosecution.
Yeah, it's under review.
Article 3H, a cemetery commissioner for the Village Cemetery Association for a term of five years. Nomination, please.
I nominate Joanne Lanfear.
Joanne Lanfear has been nominated. Other nominations anywhere? If not, we'll cease the nominating procedure. All those in favor of having Joanne Lanfear serve as a cemetery commissioner for the Village Cemetery Association for a term of five years, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. The ayes have it and we would like Joanne Lanfear to serve as a sub cemetery commissioner for the Village Cemetery Association for a term of five years. Article 3I, a cemetery commissioner for the Village Cemetery Association for a term of four years. Nomination, please.
I nominate Joe Bosley.
Sure doesn't live here anymore.
I don't think she lives here anymore.
But she has a law. I spoke with Charlie last night and she has a cemetery law and even though she does not live in town, she does have a law in what her family appears.
Does the statute? I could be wrong. Does the statute say you must be a resident of the community? Because I didn't think it did, but you did the deep dive a year ago, so.
I did, so I do believe.
Anybody want some information on this?
Yeah, so Sue just confirmed that I guess you do need to be a resident of the community. I apologize, though, I was wrong last night. I didn't think you had to be. So because it is an official commission of the town as opposed to an alternative structure, you do have to be a resident of the community, so I apologize. I was wrong on that.
Is there still any word about merging together with the Village and the Center Seminoles?
Yes, but not today.
Okay, but if we do need another one, maybe we could just.
We should elect somebody to the position today to.
Okay, Wendy, sent you.
Yes, we still need a nominee.
Wendy Howard.
Wendy Howard has been nominated. Any other nominees? Nomination, please.
Can we get the mic handed around so we can hear in the back? Because it's just like the conversation back and forth.
We have seats up front here. We have seats up front.
Well, there's other people here besides me.
Yeah, so unfortunately.
We had the mic to pass around while it was.
Yeah, so unfortunately, we only have one handheld mic, so if somebody wants to volunteer from the audience to be a runner of the mic, by all means, I would do it, but I can't vault over this very well. So if someone wants to volunteer to run the mic, it's up here.
And we're still looking for a cemetery commissioner for the Village Cemetery Association for a term of four years. Any nominations?
Wendy Howard.
Wendy Howard. Other nominations? Okay, if not, we can cease the nominating procedure and proceed to the vote. All those in favor of having Wendy Howard serve as a cemetery commissioner for the Village Cemetery Association for a term of four years, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. The ayes have it and we would like Wendy Howard to serve as a cemetery commissioner for the Village Cemetery Association for a term of four years. Congratulations. Article 3J, a cemetery commissioner for the Center for the Cemetery Association for a term of five years. Nomination, please.
I nominate Lyndall Elkins.
Lyndall Elkins.
Jake Kelly Dixon Bowles.
Excuse me?
Jake Kelly Dixon Bowles.
Jake Kelly.
My hearing is pretty bad. Some of it.
Jake Kelly.
Jake Kelly? Okay. Okay, so we have two nominations. Any other nominations? And if not, we can cease the nominating procedure. Lyndall Elkins, would you like to say a few words in your behalf of this election?
Lyndall probably isn't here today, but he's been on this board for so many years that.
Jake Kelly?
I have no objection to the other individual, but I have been wanting to be on the cemetery board for some time because I'm really interested in Green Beril. So anybody with. So anybody would like me to pursue that in our town, I'm hoping to at least investigate that so that we have really good practices in our community, so. That's something I'm interested in. It doesn't mean I have to, but that's why I'm interested in the cemetery.
Okay, the election is for a cemetery commissioner for the Center Cemetery Association for a term of five years. Let's try this first by voice vote. That's okay. All those in favor of Lydell Elkins, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those for Jay Kelly, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I believe the latter has it. Going to do a count, division of assembly. Okay, let's do that. Let's do by show of hands. Can someone, right on your side, can someone count that side? Charlie, can someone count that side? Okay, all those in favor of Lydell Elkins, please raise your hand.
Okay, raise them up high.
Raise them high. Keep them up there until you're nominated.
Behind you, Charlie.
I had 16 on the side.
You guys got it? Okay, number?
27?
27. All those in favor of Jay Kelly, please raise your hands.
Up high.
I'm not counting.
Brent's taking his shoes off.
Barry, are you up or down?
Are you up or down?
25 and 29, so.
By account of 54 to 27, we've elected Jay Kelly to serve as a cemetery commissioner for the Center Cemetery Association for a term of five years. 3K, a fire commissioner for a term of two years. Nomination please. Billy Senior. Billy Senior, other nominations, anywhere? If not, we'll cease the nominating procedure. And go to the vote. All those in favor of having Billy Baker Senior serve as a fire commissioner for a term of two years, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most say no. The ayes have it, and we've elected Billy Baker to serve as a fire commissioner for a term of two years. Probably our longest-serving senator for the state. Article 3L, a planning commission member for a term of three years.
Joe Sherman.
Joe Sherman. Other, any others? If not, we can cease the nominating procedure, go right to the vote. All those in favor of having Joe Sherman serve as a planning commission member for a term of three years, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most say no. The ayes have it, and we would like Joe Sherman to serve as a planning commission member for a term of three years. Article 3M, a planning commission member for a term of three years. Nomination?
Christine Conbar.
Did you hear that again?
Christine Conbar.
Christine Conbar. Other nominations?
Roberta Baker.
Roberta Baker. We have Christine Conbar and Roberta Baker.
I'm not gonna run this year.
Any other nominations?
I'm not gonna run this year.
Any other nominations? If not, we can cease the nominating procedure, please cease it. And go to your vote. And all those in favor of having Christine Conbar serve as a planning commission member for a term of three years, please say aye.
Aye.
Most say no. The ayes have it, and we would like Christine Conbar to serve as a planning commission member for a term of three years. Congratulations. Article 4, so the town will vote the following sum of money for free expenses in the ensuing year. 4A, the fire department. Motion?
Motion to approve $47,471.
$47,471 for a second.
Second.
The movement is seconded that we vote the following for the sum of $47,471 to the fire department. Any discussion? Questions?
Yeah.
Please stand and ask, state your name.
Suzanne Pelletier, just curious, are they buying new equipment, or what is the difference in price?
18 months.
Anyone want to... What's the big difference is the question.
Doug Hope has the chief. The difference is the 18-month budget. It has been calculated that the budget that we need will carry out the 18-month term, and we are buying funds for new equipment. We have a constant cycle of equipment that expires by standards that we have to operate under. So we have to replace certain items at certain times.
Any other questions or comments?
Murrow Nagation. I think with this increase in budget this year, it's gonna be hurting a lot of people. A $200,000 property right now is paying over $4,000 in taxes. And if everything is passed as in the budget in the report today, it's pretty close to $5,000 for a $200,000 property. And that's certainly no mansion today, it's just an average, like three-bedroom ranch on 10 acres. So I would hope that the three departments, the fire, rec, and library, and the selectmen and the contingent selectmen would would agree that maybe they would just take a little bit less this year. For example, if the fire and the rec and library, if we simply reduce those budgets by $10,000 this year, that would be a $30,000 savings. And with their reserve funds, there would be plenty of money, no cutback in services. For the selectmen, I know they find $20,000 in the contingent selectmen, that would be a $50,000 savings. And if Article 7 for the sheriff doesn't pass, that would be about $81,000. We could reduce our tax liability this year with no reduction in services. And everybody could go home happy and have a cup of coffee. Maybe $2,000. I make a motion?
I was, Taska Smith, I don't normally agree with Murrow across the board, but I fully agree with what you just said. I would move to reduce the fire department's budget from $47,471 to $42,471 and shave $5,000.
So you're offering an amendment?
What do you got?
You're offering an amendment to amend the article to $42,000?
To $42,471.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Can we ask Doug to speak again?
Is there a second to the amendment?
I'm sorry?
It's been moved and seconded that we amend Article 4A to read for the fire department, $42,471. Discussion on the amendment.
Doug, can you please speak?
Please come through the chair. Discussion on the amendment. Anyway.
Charlie Fitch, my question for Doug and the fire department's assistant, is the fire department's actual revenue this year?
In anticipation of an 18-month budget and the amount of gear that we have to maintain, upkeep, and replace, it's kind of hard to really tell whether or not we would use all of it, but honestly, I would rather not come up short. We do have a reserve fund right now, but we also are looking at possibly writing a grant to get new SCBA's. And at the tune, we have 14 members, we have 12 seated positions on the trucks. For 12 SCBA's, we're looking at like $100,000. So if we can get a grant, a 95% grant, we match 5% on that, that could pay for it. If we don't get the grant, we're left out in the cold with no SCBA's. We have to have those to operate in a small building environment. It's a self-contained breathing apparatus. That's what keeps us, gives us the ability to work inside the building.
Carol Farmer, I'd just like to say that for the fire department and the other departments coming up, we sit here once a year, and we try to second-guess them. They know what they're doing, they know what they need. I think we all should have confidence in the way they're running their departments. And we need to support, I believe we need to support what they're asking for.
Sue?
Me? Sue Wilsons. I agree 100% with Doug and Carol. Also, if you look at the budget, the fire department is already using $10,000 of their reserve funds. So, you know, they are using their reserve funds already.
Other comments on the amendment? Taska?
One more. I just want to say that I absolutely support all the departments in this town. And I take offense to being accused of second-guessing anybody. But my tax bill is going to go up $2,000, and that's the reality. So that is why I'm asking everybody to take, you know, a bit of a cutback. If they can. If not, the amendment's been made, and I'm going to pass the vote, and they're opinionated. I don't like to be carried out when somebody doesn't support this plan.
Titus Pressler, I would just point out that in terms of the fire department, with the 18-month budget, if it were actually arithmetically 18 months on the basis of 2019, it would be $51,000. So it seems to me that the fire department is actually asking less than might otherwise be required by the 18-month budget. So I would support the figure as requested.
Other comments on the amendment?
Murrow Nagation, I would just ask again, just to please, for one year. I think it's not too much to ask. If we appropriate what's been amended with what you have, you have nearly $70,000 to work with. And I don't think it's too much to ask if the rec and the fire and the library would just give in a little bit for one year. Give me everything of asphalt every year. Maybe when you get to be 80, about nine years old, and you're living on an end town, you gotta pay $5,000 thank goodness for a homeowner's rebate. But you know what I'm talking about, if you live for 80, 90 years old. And it's just not too much to ask. And we're not knocking the fire department, the guys do a great job. We're all for you. But my goodness, can't you give us just a break one year, please?
Wendy?
So we're doing this 18-month budget, and then our next budget will be for 12 months.
Correct.
So we just have this one-time six months that we have to support. And I think these three departments are vital to this community for mental health and physical health and any other kind of health and wellbeing, so I support them probably.
Any other comments on the amendment?
Joe Sherman, I think that there's some confusion here about we're changing from a one-year budget to a fiscal year. I don't understand all the details, but I think we're not talking about a year, aren't we talking about a budget for 18 months? As we were with the school board. And if someone could clarify that, because all of these are fiscal year requests we're making. If someone's clarified that, it would be of great help. Thank you.
Sorry, Joe, I was trying to clarify something else as we were clarifying the clarification. Could you clarify?
My question was, aren't we voting on a fiscal year budget figure, which is for 18 months? Because we're changing the way we, the timeframe in which we pay this. So this is a transitionary year. And so the jump in cost this year may not be symptomatic of what it's going to be in the future, it's just this one-year hump. And it's kind of confusing during that.
Yes, so Joe, that is correct. We are passing a one-time 18-month transitional budget. Next time, we'll be passing a 12-month budget. It will be on a fiscal year, not a calendar year, but it will go back to a 12-month budget. So this dramatic spike that we're seeing is essentially a one-hump as far as the cause of the 18-month budget. Does that answer your question? Do you want to add that discussion? I mean, we can have the...
Any other questions on the amendment?
Roger Lipton. Roger Lipton. For all of you that are complaining about your taxes going up, you do realize that this is for 18 months, not one year. Does that mean your annual taxes are still going up, or are they going down slightly? The money has to pay this...
Yeah, so could I, I could take a stab at that. So yeah, we're passing an 18-month budget, but we're passing it in, it's an 18-month transitional budget to get us to the beginning of the next fiscal year that we'll start. So we are raising more money in the same amount of time. And so, yes, we are raising more money in the same amount of time. That's why in the report, there's a recommendation from the board that we amend the tax due dates for the municipal portion of the municipal portion of your taxes. Because remember, you've got municipal tax taxes and you've got school taxes. And so the municipal portion, what the board is recommending, and I guess we can just throw it out there now, as good as any, is that we amend the tax due dates so that one-third of the municipal tax portion is actually going to be due sometime in May. So we would have the same tax due date in November for two-thirds of your municipal taxes. And then the additional third would be due in May. And that was what the board came up with as the best solution to try to soften the blow on the increase to the municipal taxes. Now unfortunately, we didn't kind of come to that conclusion until after the warning had been posted. And because we can't amend the warning from the floor for an item to change the tax due dates, that would require a second town meeting that would have an affirmative vote of the electorate to modify the tax due dates. So that is what the board is proposing. What might work logistically is, we talked earlier about a special town meeting to discuss and vote up or down any movement forward on this wastewater project. So what the board proposed is that that special meeting combine both a vote on the wastewater project and a vote on the change in the tax due dates. We don't have that meeting scheduled yet. It's going to depend a little bit on when the engineering is finished. But that is the proposal of the board to help at least in some way soften the impact of the increase in the municipal tax rate. And again, remember when you're doing your calculations that there is a difference between the school taxes and the municipal taxes. You know, when we ran the calculations, we were looking at this increase meaning about $278 more for every $100,000 in assessed value. So I'm not sure where the $2,000 for $200,000 in value comes from without seeing the math. But I just want to make sure that when people do your calculations, realize that education taxes and municipal taxes are separate.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Barry?
This is kind of tangentially related. I see that on the proposed budget, emergency management this year was zeroed out. And there's hopes about the virus that we might have to deal with.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Now, for voting on amendment to amend the dollar figure in Article 4A for the fire department down $5,000 to $42,471. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Most say no.
No.
The noes have it, and Article 4A reads as originally written that the town will spend $47,471 on the fire department. Any discussion? If not, let's move to the vote on Article 4A, that the town vote for the fire department to sum of $47,471. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most say no. The ayes have it, and we voted $47,471. The ayes have it, and we voted $47,471 for the fire department. Article 4B, machinery replacement fund.
I make a motion zero.
Zero. Seconded? Moving seconded that the town spent $0 on machinery replacement fund. Any discussion? If not, let's move to the vote. All those in favor of spending zero on machinery replacement funds, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say no? The ayes have it, and we're spending $0 for the machinery replacement fund.
I'd just like to explain why we decided to go zero with the machinery replacement, infrastructure, and building maintenance. Because we have a fair amount of money in the replacement funds. And to keep the budget low, we decided not to fund these areas this year.
As far as our trucks go.
And as far as our trucks and everything, the machinery is in fairly good condition. That's why we decided to skip a year on putting money into those funds.
Article 4. Article 4C, infrastructure replacement fund.
Make a motion zero.
Zero is seconded? Anywhere?
Second.
Move and seconded, we spend zero on infrastructure replacement fund. Any discussion? If not, let's move to the vote. All those in favor of spending $0 on the infrastructure replacement fund, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say no? The ayes have it, and we voted to spend $0 on the infrastructure replacement fund. Library operating expenses and payroll. Motion? I need a number.
31,004.
I need a number.
31,404.
31,404, is there a second? Move and seconded, we spend 31,404 on the building capital improvement and maintenance.
No.
Library.
This is my last year.
A reduction.
Library operating expenses and payroll. 31,404, any discussion?
I'll try again, Lord, I just feel I understand why the world, people here, can't give us a little break on taxes. If you look at this with an open, unbiased mind, you're not going to have services at all. As a gentleman here at the library, I would make a motion to amend that to 21,404.
Is there a second?
By $10,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
We moved and seconded, we amend the library operating expenses and payroll, subtracting $10,000 down to 21,404. Discussion on the amendment? Ma'am?
With that reduction, the library will still have over $60,000 to work with. I was talking to the librarian last night, and not through the library, boy, it's wonderful. But there's not room for one more book in there, because I have hundreds of books, and I asked if they'd be interested in perhaps having any books. I was told, "Oh, it's fact farmer," which I will. But there's no big expenses. I think there's no large expenses for a library coming up. They can operate with that amount of money with no reduction. And why the world of people here don't want to give us a tax break, I just fail to understand. I just wish you would look at this with an open, unbiased mind. Don't listen to the messenger, but listen to the message, please. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I totally, my best purchase, and I totally support what the library is asking for. I do not support reducing that amount. I think our library is absolutely wonderful, and I use it regularly. And it's wonderful to go there and see other people using it as well. And we need to support our library.
Other discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, that, uh, I think it was all, just pointed out that why the library needs that money in their reserve fund. There is no more room for books in the library. There's no more room for hardly anything in the library. They're maxed out. And the library is saving so that they can afford an expansion someday in the future. They need that money. And $10,000 is not going to make squat a bit of difference.
Well, what Pat just offered, future expansion, would not be covered under operating expenses and payroll. But I would like to point out that last year's budget was $19,32, for 12 months. The proposed amendment would make it 21 for 18 months, which means that it would be $2,000 more for an additional six months. So that's really a per month significant reduction. Therefore, I oppose it.
First of all, I'd like to point out we don't have $60,000 with our reserve funds. And we only, we have $39,000. And part of that is trust from one of our patrons when he died. And it is being dedicated to the expansion of the library. So we cannot use that money for any of our regular expenses. Also, the library was run by volunteers. We don't make any money. We bring funds, and it's a hard job. And we're just asking for a little bit of an increase to pay a volunteer manager who spends a lot of time there. And works very hard to make a successful library.
Comments on the amendment?
I'd like to make another amendment.
You don't ask everybody to. This man has sat here three times without you calling on him and having to stand up. Some then several others.
I have not seen his hand. Seen her hand. I mean, recognize, please, stand up and state your name.
Anita Whitworth. I'd like to make another amendment.
You'd like to amend the amendment?
I want a new amendment.
You can only amend the amendment that's on the floor.
I have a comment. My hand has been up. I support the budget increase. I use the library a lot. I've used it since I got here, about six years ago. Most people in the library board, the volunteers, the library director, board, like you wouldn't believe, I've observed it firsthand. All of us, they're quite mind-conscious. People need the library. It's an important institution in this community. And I really don't understand why it's an issue. It should not be an issue. For the people who use it, you all know who you are. It's very, very important.
Any other comments?
Jane Pressler, I'm a library trustee, and the increase in salary for our library director is because we are now going to pay her for the additional two hours that she's spent working. She actually works more than two hours, over 20 hours, so we just felt it was moral and supported paying her for that.
I would like to add to that, please, I'm keen on me handling work hour on hour on hour every week with no compensation. She's working for free. I don't understand. Would anyone want to work for free? Absolutely not. We need to increase her salary. We need to pay her minimum for the hours she works, period.
I volunteer at the library every Saturday. I have for five years now since I moved to town. That's how I got to meet most of the people in this room right now. What I can say is, A, we are totally cramped. People are climbing over each other all the time because we could use more space. That's one thing. I agree with you about my being working. I actually got an email from her yesterday at 8:30 at night asking about coverage issues. So I think it's really, really important that since you don't have a immunity center as such, the library certainly on Saturdays functions as that, and you certainly aren't there. So anytime that we can help our school, our hospital, medical stuff, or our libraries, I think we need to, I understand that money is always an issue, but I do believe that that's where we need to spend our money. Thank you.
I'd like to point out that our select board, we have several items that they aren't going to take any money this year. That adds up to almost $135,000. So they know that this tax hit is going to hit hard, so they've done their best they could. And they kept, which they feel are the most essential budgets that they need to handle. So I think they need to be commended for cutting as much as they have.
Time to vote for what we're going to be paying various institutions, seven of the 11, and zeroed out. Discussion on the amendment?
I'd like to call the question.
There's no objection, as well as a question on the amendment. No objection having been heard. All those in favor of amending Article 4D, library operating expenses and payroll, to subtract $10,000 of that and to be $21,404, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say no?
No.
The noes have it, and the amendment has been repeated. Garret Gold on the floor, it is to pay for library operating expenses and payroll to sum up $31,404. Discussion on the argument.
Suzanne Pressler, I used to be a library trustee. I don't hear anyone mentioning, so I just want to refreshment myself. I believe that the amount asked for is just for the salary, and all the fundraising they do all year long is the operating expense. Is that still true?
Yes.
Okay, so like when it says library operating expenses and payroll, it really should be library payroll?
True.
Because the silent auction and all the fundraising pays the library operating expense as I, as I used to when I was on the board. Is that still correct? Right, so it's only the library's salary that we're asking them to do for. No one's answering, so can a trustee answer this question?
Yes.
I've been trying to get this changed for years. It is true what Sue Suzanne says, it's only payroll. We pay the library director for 20 hours a week, and we'd like to pay him for 22 hours a week. She does, has no benefits. It's strictly a salary.
So the question's misleading when it says library operating expenses payroll. And so I move that if it struck from operating expenses, it struck, and it would just be library payroll, which is authentic. And it matches the situation, otherwise it's kind of confusing.
Other questions on the library?
Carol Farmer.
Point of view, that's an amendment, right?
I, I move, yeah.
What was your amendment?
She made a motion to change the verbiage, the line item.
Oh, sorry, the second.
Second.
The move is seconded that we change the wording on Article 4D regarding the library to just read library payroll.
Yes.
Discussion on the amendment?
Carol Farmer, I would actually like the opposite to happen. It should say library operating expenses. I mean, it's, there is not another department in our town that we vote on where we're voting, except for our town clerk and treasurer, where we vote on people's payroll directly. We're talking about running the library. The line item should read library operating expenses, period. Because payroll is part of the operating expenses. Whether, because people have for years and years and years tried to keep down the budget of the library, that we knew that library had to be paid. And so all the fundraising still continues to try to keep the library going. The line item should read the library operating expenses, period.
Does that line item include the actual building maintenance expenses, or is that under the public building?
Page 37 explains everything.
Did you summarize? Please, did you summarize? Any other questions, comments on the amendment?
I mean, the, the short answer is yes and no. I mean, so there is, there is items in the budget that have to do with maintenance of the space, but the overall maintenance of the building itself is handled, please, it is split out of this, so yeah.
Comments on the amendment? Has been moved and seconded to amend Article 4D to read library operating expenses.
No, it's library payroll.
I'm sorry, to eliminate operating expenses, it's to read library payroll. Discussion on the amendment? Anywhere? Anywhere?
Yeah, I tell this, Senator Pressler, I just second what Carol Farmer said. Right now, we, we have, I mean, Brown's all the public support for the library, which is fantastic. I'm going to make some challenges and break. But that's not necessarily going to remain the case. We'll do the social effort, make it that way, and we continue to raise funds. But it seems dangerous to strike that, strike operating expenses from. Protect an insurance in the future.
Mary?
If it ain't broke, don't fix it. The current language gives the greatest amount of flexibility. I don't see any...
Any other discussion on the amendment?
Can it just say library, like fire, rec, library, area? Yes.
Amendment?
Do I make an amendment?
Yeah, amendment.
All right, so I need to make an amendment then to...
What, you're trying to amend the amendment?
Yes.
We already got two amendments, that's as far as we can go.
Okay.
Yeah, we've eliminated the first one, the dollar sign, that you can amend the current amendment.
So I'd like to amend the current amendment, just say library.
Is there a second?
No, because she can amend the amendment.
Is there a second?
Second, yes.
Any discussion on the amendment to the amendment? To amend the amendment to just read library, now the thing.
I can withdraw my original amendment, it's just that no one has mentioned that we're only talking about our family today, and that no one's mentioned that we do all this fundraising. So I just thought for maybe the new people who are here, I think this may need to say operating expenses. I can withdraw my amendment. I just think that a town meeting might be good to review that, so people remember. I don't disagree, I just think...
I believe, I believe this amendment passes, it would withdraw your amendment. The amendment has been amended to Article 4D read money for the library, $31,404. Any further discussion on this amendment? If not, let's go to the vote. All those in favor of paying for the library, of amending 4D to read just for the library, $31,404, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say no?
No.
The amendment has passed, so Article 4D will be that the town shall spend for the library to sum up $31,404. Any discussion? No discussion, no questions, let's move right to the vote. That the town shall pay the library $31,404, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no? The ayes have it, and we voted to spend on the library to sum up $31,404. Article 4D, building capital improvement and maintenance. Motion?
Motion for zero?
Zero, is there a second?
Second.
Move and seconded, we pay for building capital improvement, $0. Any discussion? Questions, amendments? If not, we can proceed to the vote. If not, we can proceed to the vote. All those in favor of spending for building capital improvement and maintenance, zero dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no? The ayes have it, and we voted, zero dollars for building capital improvement and maintenance. Article 4F, the recreation department, motion?
Make a motion, $30,000.
Thirty thousand, there's a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we spent $30,000 on the recreation department. Discussion?
Would you amend, uh, $30,000, $20,000?
Move to amend, $30,000 to $20,000?
Uh, second.
Move consecutive, is there discussion? Anywhere?
Ever, it would have been helpful to list these amounts as annualized. We are voting on an 18-year, 18-month budget, excuse me, and so, $30,000 over 18 months is $20,000 over 12 months. In other words, the recreation committee is asking for double funds. It would be helpful for you to list annualized budget amounts for all of these articles, which is easier.
Discussion on the amendment? Anywhere? Time to go to the vote.
Uh, Marcia Silver, I just want people to understand, we went to 30 this year because we're very concerned with Riverwalk Park, what's going to happen down there. We don't know, what we know is going to be a substantial cost to getting all the fields back up and running. We've had a lot of volunteers stepping up, but it's still not going to cover the cost. So, we have $15,000 in Riverwalk Park, and our commitment is that if we do not need those funds, we will not use them for anything there. They're specifically here at our forward Riverwalk. If they aren't used at Riverwalk, they will be tempted to move forward to our next year's budget.
Questions, comments on the amendment? Questions on the amendment? If not, we can proceed to vote on the amendment. It has been moved and seconded that we amend the dollar, the dollar figure for the recreation department down to $20,000, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no?
No.
The noes have it, the amendment has failed, so the article and the floor is to pay the recreation department with some of $30,000. Any discussion?
I have a question. Looking at their budget, I see their bottom capital improvement, Riverwalk, it doesn't mean previous year, but now 15, nine, that represents virtually all of the, um, I'm just wondering what, how that would be spent, what would be on Riverwalk?
She just said, she just said.
Oh, that's the question with that.
Any other discussion on the rec department? If not, we can proceed to the vote. And all those in favor of allocating to the recreation department a sum of $30,000, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no?
No.
The ayes have it, and we voted to spend $30,000 on the recreation department. Article 4G, the reappraisal fund, motion please?
Motion zero.
There's a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we spend zero dollars on the reappraisal fund. Any discussion? Comments? If not, we can proceed to the vote. All those in favor of spending zero for the reappraisal fund, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no?
No.
The ayes have it, we voted to spend zero for the reappraisal fund. 4H, conservation commission, motion?
Motion. Uh, I move to change it from same to zero.
You're voting zero?
Yes.
There's a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, then we spend zero dollars on the conservation commission.
I'd like to expand on the amendment.
There is amendment.
I'm sorry.
The original motion is to spend zero. Any discussion?
I'd like to discuss. Uh, good morning, I'm Chris Sine, I'm the conservation commission chair. I'd just like to say that we are cognizant of our budget, and we are really distressed with the amount of funds that's at stake. We raised enough funds from the wonderful community, and we feel like we can move forward at the amount that we're...
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, we proceed to the vote. Then we, the town, spent zero dollars for the conservation commission, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no?
No.
The ayes have it, we voted to spend zero on the conservation commission. Want to order?
I think we could say, change vote on I, J, and K, suspend rules?
Uh, we could, we have, is there any, is it, is the move that we combine I, J, and K into one? One move, which is going to take a lot of time. We have to suspend the rule, all those in favor of suspending the rule to take these three articles up into one, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no?
No.
I believe the ayes have it, we have to suspend the rules to take the following articles, 4I, J, and K, emergency management, motion? In the unproposed, he's saying, you have to stay on board with this now. Emergency management, is there a motion?
Emergency, zero dollars, restoration of records, zero dollars, flood or emergency road repairs, zero dollars.
The seconded?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, that we spend for emergency management, restoration of records, flood, emergency road repairs, zero dollars for all three. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Discussion? Mary?
In terms of emergency management, if there are anybody here that can comment as to what expense the town is likely to incur, uh, should the virus spread significantly to the point where it becomes a state, state and town emergency?
So, the Vermont Department of Health has issued guidance, um, which we can probably
actually make available on the website, um, so we can put a link to the website on, uh, we can put a link on the town website to the Department of Health guidance. That provides a really great overview of steps and precautions to be taken. Outside of that, the town does not have any plans in place as of yet, as far as how we would react should there be a widespread outbreak in town. Um, you know, should that come to that, we would reconvene and come up with measures, something like, you know, no assemblies, fist bumping, but, um, we haven't gotten there yet.
Comments?
Another question. On restoration of records, is anything being done in terms of digitizing the land records?
Hey Liz. Liz, do you want to talk about digitization?
Is anything being done in terms of digitizing the land records? Uh, yes, we are still currently digitizing records. Uh, we had started, I believe, about a few years ago, that we decided to contract a COT system to be digitizing the records. Um, so we are still currently doing that, we have our index online and in search format. We are also still continuing to fax scan on a daily basis.
So does that need to be reflected anywhere with the budget?
That would have been reflected in the budget that you would pass back in 2018, when you would have started this conversation about digitization, so this is, it's all still in the budget as far as us using this system at our offices.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Other questions, any discussion?
I don't think these should all be put together, because we have, emergency management is not the same as flood and emergency road repairs, number one. We had, I live in a flood plain in a village, we had two emergencies just this, uh, last fall. One, one was the Halloween flood, that actually would have flooded my basement if my wife hadn't opened me up. There seemed to be no, and I talked to people later, there was very little emergency, there was probably a emergency response, but there sure wasn't the kind of warning. I've been here with a number of floods, there was a kind of a warning, uh, system that got you out of bed and say, hey, you better move your damn car, you better respond to this thing. And I'm curious, what has happened to that kind of emergency response? We live in a high water time, we live in two, a village and a center, both of which are very much moving further and further into the flood plain. So I think these are really important issues, and definitely should not be, whatever their funding is, zero don't strike me as correct, it's left as well. Because these are big realities, it could happen next week, or it could happen three years from now, we don't know. But when you need an emergency, you need a response system.
Can we talk to questions?
No objection, we'll call the question.
Objection.
Are they asking to just put them together for the vote right now? Or?
Right now, they're all three leaders together, and they're all at zero. The question has been called, uh, let's see here. No debate, need a two-thirds majority, we're forth, no objection, with no objection, to call it a question? No objection?
I have a question.
Okay, now we have to go to the vote. We need two-thirds majority to call the question, all those in favor of calling the question and proceeding to the vote, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no?
No.
The ayes have, they've passed the two-thirds threshold, and so the motion on the floor is a combination of 4I, J, and K, that the town will expend zero dollars for emergency management, zero dollars for restoration of records, and zero dollars for flood or emergency road repairs. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no?
No.
The ayes have it, we'll give zero dollars to all three of those. So basically, we'll give zero dollars each of those $11 figures, for those who are concerned about increasing our taxes. I'd like to say, also, I'm wondering, our first big cloud is, is the fire department. And I notice this crowd sort of shows fairly heavily on the senior side. Now, if you're young and you've got energy, join the fire department, it's probably the best association of yours that ever existed, the volunteer fire department, please join it, if you really are a patriot.
No, same.
Okay, so any of you that?
He's volunteering.
Article five, so the town will allocate some of money for the town officers, any question? Article five, name each select board member. Motion? Guys, if you put this together, you gotta be able to make a motion. Each select board member.
$1,000 plus our deep and sincere thanks.
There's a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we pay each select board member the sum of $1,000 plus our thanks. Any discussion? If not, we can proceed to the vote. Then the town will pay each select board member $1,000 plus our thanks, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls say no?
No.
The ayes have it, and we voted for each select board member the sum of $1,000. Article five, B, the listeners. Motion? Please, a motion?
I say make a motion as written.
That we pay our first year members $15 an hour, second year members $18 an hour.
Yes.
What about a third year member?
Eight. Second year, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, that we pay our listeners, first year members $15 an hour, second year members, non, $18 an hour. Discussion? Comments, debate? Amendments? If not, we can proceed to the vote. The town, anywhere?
Debate. How many hours are these people going to be a week representing the town?
Listeners?
Eight.
Eight?
Eight hours.
On average.
On average?
In the spring, it's four of them. Eight hours a week on average, and in the spring for two or three months, it can be between eight and 25.
Other discussion? Anywhere? If not, we can proceed to the vote. That the town pay our listeners, uh, first year members $15 an hour, second year non-members $18 an hour, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no?
No.
The ayes have it, we voted to pay our first year members $15 an hour, second year members, non, $18 an hour. Article five, C, the Board of Civil Authority, motion?
As written, uh, to Vermont minimum wage.
Second, there's a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, we pay our Board of Civil Authority the Vermont minimum wage. Any discussion? What is the Vermont minimum wage?
$10.96. $10.96.
$10.96? Any discussion? For the Board of Civil Authority? If not, we can proceed to the vote. All those in favor of paying our Board of Civil Authority the Vermont minimum wage, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no? The ayes have it, we voted to pay our Board of Civil Authority the Vermont minimum wage. Article five, D, the Board of Abatement, motion?
I think the motion is written.
Vermont minimum wage, there's a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, that we pay the Board of, uh, the Board of Abatement the Vermont minimum wage. Any discussion? Now we can proceed to the vote, all those in favor of paying our Board of Abatement the Vermont minimum wage, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no? The ayes have it, we voted to pay our Board of Abatement the Vermont minimum wage. Article five, C, all duly elected or appointed town officers, the IRS allowance for mileage or travel as part of official duties, and reimbursement of expenses related to those duties if approved in advance by the appropriate governing body or duly appointed board. Motion?
Second.
Second. Moved and seconded, that the town pay all duly elected or appointed town officers, the IRS allowance for mileage or travel as part of official duties, and reimbursement of expenses related to those duties if approved in advance by the appropriate governing body or duly appointed board. Any discussion? If not, we can proceed to the vote. That the town will pay all duly elected or appointed town officials for IRS allowance for mileage or travel as part of official duties, and reimbursement of expenses related to those duties if approved in advance by the appropriate governing body or duly appointed board, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, say no? The ayes have it, and approved Article five, E, as written. So the town will allocate some of money, it has been questioned about specified age and age well.
Can I make a, I don't know what you call it, you know?
Spend the rules?
Spend the rules. More than all of them, is a single vote.
There's a second to that?
I said it.
It's moved, we, uh, we suspend the rules and take all of five, uh, all of six, Article six, off as one. All those are, now that requires a two-thirds vote, all those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no? The ayes have it, and we voted to suspend the rule and take Article six as one, and as written, so the three Ds out, age well, $2,000, Grayland Home Health, 2522, Grayland County Industrial Development, 500, ages nice association, 1,000, the Siskiyou River Basin Association, 600, Greenup neighborhood, 100, Green Mountain Transit, 596, Montgomery Fund Association, 1,000. Discussion?
Um, I'd like to amend Montgomery Town Association to read, Montgomery Center for the Arts. And also, adding to that, I know that it's a contentious disvaluer for everybody, but that $1,000 was reflected as a 12-month budget, so Montgomery Center for the Arts is lucky to break even every year with our expenses, and immediately we get $1,000, it's extremely helpful, so if we could change that to be rate 1,500, that would be...
Well, that's, that's reasonable.
That would be more accurate for us.
Basically, the amendment has been offered to change the name to Montgomery Town Association, Montgomery Center for the Arts, and to change the request to $1,500. Discussion on the amendment?
I just want to make, um, note that every year, we always send a letter, and it has drawn the line, we're going to put the arts. For some reason, it always gets listed in the town report as the Montgomery Council's motion. So, this is something that we've been always going up to, you know, having to make this amendment.
Yeah, my bad, sorry. So, there were some questions in the past about what name, um, what name the entity versus the bank account versus the whatever, but I promise, next year, we're gonna get it.
Thank you.
Discussion, questions on the amendments?
I got a question in the law on Main Street as far as, uh.
Who is that? Please stand up.
I'm standing.
I can't, standing in front of the window, I can't see.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Carrie and Chuck. I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm kind of about to. On Google search, Main Street is coming up, South Main, North Main, creating a nine-one-one emergency black hole. One resident had taken an officer three hours.
Excuse me, is this anything to do with the amendment?
Yeah, it definitely does.
The MCA?
To do it.
The MCA?
North South, Main Street. I'll let Google ask right now.
No, no, what's up? We're discussing the amendment to change the name to the MCA. If you need, please.
I would just like to finish so we can actually rest this as part of today's meeting.
I'm sorry, I'm the one who's. The amendment on the floor is to change the name of the Montgomery Town Association, the Montgomery Center for the Arts, and to change the dollar figure to fifteen hundred dollars. Discussion on that amendment, please.
The amounts that are, sorry. The amounts that, Marika, the ones that are shown here, are they for eighteen months or twelve months?
Twelve months.
So again, this is the confusion about this on a number of fronts. These are actually, they're for eighteen months, but because the payments are made at the end of the year, um, it would still be one payment for the eighteen-month budget. So actually, um, the payments reflected here, you know, they are correct for the eighteen months. Um, again, because you make the payment once a year, only one payment's gonna be made in this next eighteen-month budget cycle, so.
Discussion on the amendment?
Uh, Loretta, my bad, I'm just curious, do all of these agencies really intend that they have put in an amount for twelve months which is actually gonna cover eighteen months? Or why not?
Yeah, so again, the amounts here, the, these are reflective of an eighteen-month budget because the payments to the entities are made once a year and they're made in December. And so, right, December? Yeah. And so they would still only be made once in the eighteen-month budget cycle.
So in effect, all of these agencies are getting less money for.
No, no. No, no, because we, the payments are only made once, and because of when the payments fall, they still only happen once in the eighteen-month budget cycle. So it's, it's flat.
There's only one December, I think.
Yep, yep.
Discussion on the amendment?
So, so should we put the MTA back to, the Center for the Arts back to one thousand?
Right.
Because they're gonna get their check in December.
The motion on the floor is fifteen hundred.
Okay.
The article on the, the amendment on the floor is to change the name and to change the dollar figure to fifteen hundred. That's what's on the floor. Are we ready to vote on that?
I think that's really two separate things, really. Changing the name and the dollar figure, I think.
Do you want to amend the amendment?
Yeah. Time to go on break up, whatever you want for it.
So the change, basically, the request was to change the name and add the dollars. You've tried to amend it to replace the dollars back to where it was. So the amendment would just be to change the name. Tell me the name.
I'm saying vote on both separately. First, change the name or not, and then vote on the dollar amount.
That's amended, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second.
Move and seconded to amend the amendment to just vote on the name change. Any discussion on that? If not, we can proceed to the vote to amend Article H to change the name to the Montgomery Town Association to the Montgomery Center for the Arts. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those say no? Change the name to the Montgomery Town Association. Any further?
No, no. Senator for the Arts.
Should go back to the thousand.
Any further, it basically agrees to pay the Montgomery Center for the Arts one thousand dollars. Any discussion on the article? Questions, amendments? Okay, this, uh, time savings I need to get through this.
Right.
Article six, in total, that the town Montgomery appropriate the following sums of money and have been questioned by the specified agency. Age well, two thousand. Franklin Home Health, twenty-five twenty-two. Franklin County Industrial Development, five hundred. Asians Nice Association, one thousand. Sisquatch River Basin Association, six hundred. Greenup Day Vermont, one hundred. Green Mountain Transit, five ninety-six. And Montgomery Center for the Arts, one thousand. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those say no? The ayes have it, and we pass Article six as read. Article seven. So the voters of the town Montgomery advise the select board to enter into a contract with the Franklin County Sheriff's Department for Police Services not to exceed an annual cost of twenty thousand eight hundred dollars, thirty-one thousand two hundred dollars for an eighteen-month period.
I have a question.
Is there a motion?
I have a question.
Do you need a motion? Do you have a point, border?
So moved.
We need a motion, this has to be on the floor to discuss this, sorry.
So moved.
Move to a second.
Second.
Move and seconded, Article seven, now read. Anyone, discussion?
I have an amendment. I, I moved to amend the word, uh, change the word advise to authorize.
Do I have the select board or authorize? Is there a second? There's a move and seconded to change the wording that the voters of the town Montgomery authorize the select board.
Um, why? Why, why, why put this on this ballot? This is twenty thousand dollars that we can easily.
Can I just, so.
I want to help the select board.
So just to respond, just to respond to why this is on here. So, um, this is something that's come up in the past year, and there's been a large enough segment of the community which has voiced, um, a desire to see this. And so I think you're gonna find diverse opinions on the board, diverse opinions in the room certainly, but I think as a board, taking off our individual opinion hats, if there's enough of a consensus, um, around an issue to bring it forward at town meeting, I think that it's our duty to do so and we're better off having a conversation. Um, so I think kind of, if we were gonna be dictators and say that only things are up here that only we care about, um, I think we wouldn't be doing our job. So, um, that's why it's up here.
I thought this was why, are the sheriffs actually going to show up, show up in a reasonable manner? Or are they gonna pass this off to call the state police every time we need it?
So, um, as far as the, as far as the contracted services, so the contract, um, that is drafted with them and the budget is reflective of, this would be for eight hours per week, um, that they would be providing services in town.
Twenty thousand for eight hours a week?
It's actually twenty thousand eight hundred, but yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Chuck, I have a question. Mary Niles, so that money, is that just for them being there, um, doing speed checks?
Yeah, so.
Is that eight hours of speeding tickets?
Yeah, so, so, um, so that, that is for eight hours of service. Um, and the contract, the last iteration of the draft was amended to read, "The patrols shall be scheduled by Franklin County Sheriff's Office. Priority areas are to include daytime and evening speed enforcement in Montgomery Village and Montgomery Center, periodic patrol of secondary class-three town roads to discretion of Franklin County Sheriff's Office." So, um, in putting this together and drafting what we've got in front of us today, um, the board was really cognizant of trying as hard as we could that if we were to pass this, that we try to control, for lack of a better word, what, what they're gonna be doing in town. Um, the truth is, we can only do so much of that. We can't dictate exactly when they're gonna be here, exactly what they're gonna do. We can put guardrails on it and try to keep them between that, um, but there's only a certain extent for what, you know, we can essentially guarantee in a contract.
In the past, it was, it seemed like it was just basically speed enforcement and stuff. And frankly, I don't really wanna pay twenty thousand for speed enforcement. If they were on the fast roads, if there was rapids, if there was drug stuff, that'd be different, but it's just speed.
Right.
I just feel like you can do that.
I would pay twenty thousand dollars if it would stop the ATVs from going by my house every weekend.
That would be bad.
I would pay that.
Is there anything in the contract for the solitary behavior or the control in the morning, Friday, Saturday, nights, or sleep?
Yeah, so again, there's nothing in this draft contract that points to that specific action. And, and again, in kind of negotiating with them in the draft that we have in front of us, there's only so far that we can go to dictate what actions they're gonna take when they're in town. We can set priority areas for them. The, um, you know, late-night noise complaints, that was not a priority area that was identified. So that's where it's at.
Can I ask all the previous question? I wanna vote on Barry's amendment.
Any objection?
Wait.
No.
To say.
No debate, is there any objection? Correct if not. Two-thirds vote to call the question. All those in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say no?
No.
I believe it's the two-thirds.
Question on the amendment?
Yeah.
Amendment to change.
This is on the amendment to change the, to change the word advice to the word authorize. That's voting on the amendment. All those in favor of calling the question and voting to, to change the word advice to the word authorize, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? We got the two-thirds in there. So, the article number, each of the voters of the town Montgomery authorize the select board to enter into a contract with the Franklin County Sheriff's Department for Police and Services not to exceed an annual cost of twenty thousand eight hundred dollars, which is thirty-one thousand two hundred dollars for an eighteen-month period. Discussion on the article? Barry?
Does the draft contract have an escape clause where we can get out of it in like thirty days? Or if so, what is it?
Yes, so, um, section thirteen was added, um, at our request. Um, it's a termination clause. Either party may terminate this contract at any time upon presentation of a thirty-day, uh, notice given right of either party.
If we have an emergency, are we to call them? Or I've had a couple of situations, I've called state police. So who, state police are really good. Who, if we have a contract, do we call them?
So if you have an emergency, call 911. Um, and they, and they will dispatch, um, they will dispatch the, uh, emergency services. I, I believe if we, um, if we are in this contract, you would still call 911. You would not call Franklin County Sheriff's Department. So still call 911. Or the social.
I see the state police in town quite a lot, and I'm sure you all team them too. So I don't know why we need to spend thirty-one thousand dollars for additional work. They're here a lot, a lot more than they ever used to be. And we all see them. They sit at the river walk, they drive through town, they pull people over, you know?
Are you the lucky one? I am a presser. I have, myself, have actually not seen state police recently in the area. There is a very significant speeding problem in both the village and the center. And it's not simply a matter of noise and nuisance, it is a matter of public safety. There are a number of children who live in the village, a number of children who live in the center. And I often see children in the street as I'm passing through. And I think it is a public safety for issue for the children in our community. And I very much support, uh, this, this contract with the Sheriff's Department.
Um, just a point of information, uh, regarding speed enforcement, and this is by no means to one way or the other on the question, but just so folks are aware, um, we did order radar speed signs last year. Um, we didn't get them in the ground before winter because of a disaster that happened on Halloween. But this coming spring, we will be putting in radar speed signs in four locations, uh, coming into the village and the center. So just by pointing out information, I want to let folks know that.
Christina's words, another point of question. Um, isn't there more of the planning of reworking our downtown area that there may be some ways that we can change that to make it a safer space?
So, um, Christina's question had to do with some of the proposed, um, street scape work on Main Street and whether that would lead to some traffic calming measures. Um, the answer is yes. Um, those alternatives that are gonna be presented Thursday, 6:00 PM, Public Service Building, do include some potential structural mechanisms to calm traffic or slow traffic. Um, so there, there are some proposals in that that would seek to address that.
I'm gonna detain this article until speed enforcement radar signs are put up. We know more about what we're doing with the streetscapes. And in lieu of the fact that our taxes are going up this year, this is one item that I think we should put off for future discussion. It's really contentious, my opinion.
I second.
Second, it's actually, you're, you're willing to postpone indefinitely because we're not gonna take it up with the table today.
Gotcha, okay, I moved to.
It is debatable? It moved to postpone?
Uh, state police are up here almost every day. Between nine and ten, you see them come through town. As a matter of fact, um, uh, February nineteenth, they were here at quarter of seven in the morning. State police do come up here quite often. Coffee with you? Yeah, when they, when they, when they count the hours, do they, uh, for example, if they're charged for four hours, uh, do they count from the time they leave St. Olm, the time they get back?
Yep. Yeah, so Merle's question had to do with how the eight hours were counted, and we did clarify this with them, that the eight hours in the contract would be for eight hours of service in the community. So travel time would not be counted in that part of hours. So the answer, Merle, is no, travel time is not included in the eight hours.
Well, no, but, well, they did. For example, if they billed us for four hours of coverage, they counted from the time they left St. Olm.
No, 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 no. They, they, they would only count hours in the community, so travel time would not be included in the contract. Yep.
Sacramancy. Um, I would like to address what Travis addressed with the speeding problem. Having a business in town, it's really an issue. And just having a presence, even though it's eight hours a week of a policeman being spotted once in a while, people here at will take note and slow down. But it's a real issue for anybody who either lives or works in the downtown area that the speeding is getting out of control, especially with trucks coming.
Isn't the motion debatable or debatable?
Yes, debatable.
It's debatable.
It wasn't really motion debatable because there's no expectation we're gonna take this up later in the meeting. The debate, essentially, is the motion to postpone indefinitely.
I second.
Which, 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 which is the most, basically, right now, the motion on the floor is to postpone indefinitely. It requires a second, it is debatable, it is not, we cannot amend it.
I'm not.
Can I, uh, if it is, if, if the current motion to not deal with it at this meeting passes, when will be the next opportunity to bring it up?
Next town meeting.
But is there one plan before a year from now because of the eighteen-month break up?
So, um, so there is an expectation that we would have a special town meeting between now and next March third or whatever. Um, and that would be to consider, uh, moving forward with the wastewater and street state projects and, um, likely amending the tax due dates. Um, there's no fixed date for that, um, so.
This could be added if it fails today.
Yeah, it could be added, yeah.
As it stands by now, if we pass the motion to postpone indefinitely, basically, we're killing it.
Today.
How is that different than if we vote no? Like, how is that?
It's the same thing. It's one of those weird things where by voting yes, we're voting no.
I hear you.
I was taking a friend to the hospital in Boston. And when I got back, a week later, I got a bill from the state of Massachusetts for $1.25. I called him to find out what that was. And it was for a toll. They actually read my license plate and sent a bill for the toll. There was a toll, no nothing. So, my question is, does anybody know if there is such a device, instead of having a flashing sign, which may or may not work, is there a device that can read someone's license plate and issue them a ticket for speeding?
I actually know the answer to that question. Statutorily, there's a law in Vermont that does not allow the law enforcement authorities to use radar enforcement, because Vermont does not allow for that type of enforcement because of the belief that you should be able to face your accuser. So no law enforcement agency in Vermont can do that. Veterrants will not put one up. I just want to talk a minute about why this is here, because Tosca raised the question, why we brought it up. A large percentage of the town residents, especially those that live in the village and the center, have had to deal with some very difficult traffic situations. It's gotten worse over the last year or two. We've seen lumber trucks racing through town at 50 miles an hour. We've, you know, aside from the ATV issue, we just see visitors from out of town that basically, especially in the center, but also in the village, think that straightaway is just a, you know, a straightaway. They go crazy. And so, the citizens wanted this issue brought up. There's also been another contributing factor was there was a large number of break-ins that happened over the last six months or so. We had citizens coming and letting us know that the state patrol was not showing up when they called them, that they weren't getting the response rates they needed. We talked with the new sheriff. The nice thing is that, you know, we have a new sheriff now. It's different from the old sheriff, so there's that change. We even have, you know, a resident of our own town who works for the Sheriff's Department. And, you know, Andre's a great guy. And, you know, I look at him, and I look at, you know, what type of people we would have in here. We have the ability to cancel this. If we, you know, decide after three months or four months that they're going back to their old place, we have a 30-day clause to get out of it. And it's that simple. That was something that Charlie was able to negotiate, and I think that was wise. You know, it's, it's a controversial issue. We wrestled with it. We had a majority to go one way on it. And we thought, you know, this is something that involves everybody in the town. There are a lot of strong feelings on both sides. I understand the history. I understand the concerns about somebody getting killed on the streets. So, that's why we wanted it brought here. That's why I don't think it should be tabled. I think we just need to deal with this issue, and let the voice of the town be heard, and we'll make a decision. You know, we've decided that whatever the town says, that's what we'll do. So, that's what brought this all about.
Hi, my name is Amelia Fothering. I have a question about this 30-day clause. How would that, how, what would that process look like? Are we having another meeting where we're all sitting there like, okay, the police have been in our town for 30 days, let's vote on it? Or, we have to contact our select board and be like, give them out?
Contact the select board, come to a meeting, or call us, tell us you think it needs remedied. We're convinced that it needs to be canceled. We write them a letter, 30 days later, they're gone.
Okay, my name is Klaus Lewis. I think there's a need on this particular issue that we're discussing, to realize that in most parts of our lives, the perception of what is legally reasonable and prudent to do has changed significantly in the last 20 or 30 years. You know, you drive on the road, let's say, the Innesburg. I drove last night at about midnight. I was going 55, over 55 miles an hour, and there's cars racing by me. You know, if you don't enforce the law, eventually, it will get out of hand. I think that money well-spent. It's in the best interest of the people to do this, to enforce the law. And it's going to help the quality of life of the people that are here. And it's going to help the town to be more attractive to tourists and other people that want to come here and enjoy this beautiful area that we live in. Thank you.
I just want to know, do, would this department treat ATVs the same as vehicles? So, what jurisdiction do they have over ATVs?
They can't drive ATVs on state routes.
So would they actually stop?
I don't, I don't honestly, I, I know that the state police policy is that they can engage with ATVs when they're stopped, but they're not allowed to chase them. I don't know what the Sheriff's Department policy is. My recollection from when we had the big ATV meeting ever long ago is that only fish and wildlife have the authority to stop a moving ATV. It's the only, the only department jurisdiction. I don't know how the Sheriff's Department handles stopped ATV. That would be a question for, that'd be a question to follow up. But they can't pursue. Only fish and wildlife can pursue.
So it's almost like there's this loophole when they're on a road and not supposed to.
Yes, it's illegal, but it's only enforceable by fish and wildlife under pursuit. The best of our knowledge.
Christina, I move that we go with Tosca's question and vote on it. And I just want to reiterate that we are putting signs in place, and they are putting things downtown. Why don't we give it six months? We can always sign the contract later. Let's see if these flashing signs and the things they do downtown make a difference. But I move that we go with Tosca's question and vote.
All those in favor of teaching discussion, say aye. Those who say no?
No.
I think the ayes have it. The motion on the floor is to pass over or postpone indefinitely Article 7. If you vote yes, basically, it kills it. If you vote no, then we continue to discuss this article. All those in favor of passing over this article, please say aye. Those who say no?
No.
Let's have a show of hands. All those in favor of passing over this article, please raise your hand.
Put it high.
Keep your hands up. Tosca, we have numbers.
People are, people are not sure what they're voting on.
They're voting on to pass over this article. Basically, it will kill it.
Okay, so now more hands are going up. So.
Please keep your hands up.
Keep, keep, keep your hands up. Keep your hands up. Thank you. I had 25.
56. Even 25 is 40?
I had 31. I was like, 56 total.
All those in favor of, all those who do not wish to postpone this article, and to keep it alive for further discussion, please raise your hands.
Do you need two-thirds?
Yes.
I have 20. 34.
34. And two-thirds was 36. So we did, we do have the two-thirds majority. And we have voted to pass over this article.
56 to 34.
Okay, together, they have 90. Two-thirds of 90 is 60.
You don't have two-thirds.
My man.
If you have 90 total.
We have not, we have not voted to postpone, we have not voted to postpone the rule, so this is still open. We're still on Article 7. We still postpone indefinitely, but we have not voted to call the question. We just did it and failed. Now, let's keep my thought. Come back?
Yes, my name is Barry. I'm shot at the street corner. Are people aware that the lines do have sensors that assist the police officers? And are we also aware that we have roads that say they're ATV passable? Those signs we have to look down for will be considered . That would be in violation of our own terms and contracts. That's all I'm saying, is if we wanted to futurally have Sheriff's Department saying, you know, those ATV passable signs would have to come down off those individual roads. Primarily.
So, ATVs are governed by the ATV ordinance, which is available on Town website, so you can refer to that.
Thank you. Just don't want to violate any contract terms.
Carol Farmer, I'm also concerned. I'm on Main Street quite often, concerned about the speed there. We've got, we're getting the sign, and I think it's a great idea, and I think it does help people slow down. I know it helps me slow down. But I don't think enough. I think it is worthwhile to have the sheriff visible in town occasionally. It's not like we're looking for a whole lot of coverage. But I also think the talk of like the streetscape and traffic calming, yes, that may come. And if that comes, that's also money that's going to have to be voted to have it happen. But if that comes, and at next year's town meeting, we decide the sheriff's no longer needed, then that could be pulled out. But there's no way that traffic calming is going to have any effect in the next year.
My name is Esther Lickde, and I'm relatively new here, so I have a very basic question to ask. We live in Franklin County. The job of the Sheriff's Department of Franklin County is to patrol Franklin County. Why are we having to pay him to do his job?
So, good question. And that's one of those ones that in principle makes a lot of sense. But when you look at how the state law governs county sheriffs and their actions, they have the authority to pull you over now, but they are not going to patrol here unless we pay them for that service. I mean, that's what it breaks down to, is the way that county sheriffs work in Vermont. It's the business, for lack of a better word.
Little information on that. The state police are funded by the state. State police are funded by the state, but the Sheriff's Department, whether it be Franklin, Chindon, or whichever county, is the business. And they have to be paid by whoever wants to pay for their services. But they have authority anywhere in the state. They're not limited to the county that they're affiliated to.
Anyone know? Eric?
It's been widely reported recently about police abuse of force, excessive abuse of force. We've seen instances of police brutality in Burlington and St. Albans. It's also been reported that the training qualifications for sheriff deputies are far lower, given the fact there are any compared to the state police. Our state police require them to go training and de-escalation. So, in the contract that we have with the Franklin County Sheriff, what requirements are we placing on qualification of the deputies that will patrol Montgomery? How many hours of Act 80 training will they have? How many hours of Team 2 training will they have? How many hours of crisis intervention training will they have? How many other hours of other police training will they have? We would have qualified people patrolling in the town if we don't have one. What guarantees that to be?
So there is no verbiage in the contract related to training requirements for employees of the Franklin County Sheriff's Department.
So we can have a testosterone-poisoned hothead with something to prove.
You can have them now. We have had them. Except now, we can't fire them. Yes, you may. Eat a little sugar.
Can we call the vote on?
Can I ask a question to the contract, please? Charlie? In the contract, after all this speed enforcement comes to fruition, and these sheriffs are pulling over speeding log trucks, and speeding cars, and speeding pickups, who gets the money? Who gets the tickets? Who gets the revenue from the tickets? This is important, because we cannot set the cost of this. And are they actually going to pull over speeding log trucks? Because previously, when we endeavored to do this, they did not. They did not do same thing they sat in certain areas at certain times of weeks. But I think we ended up with $427 worth of revenue in tickets, because they didn't produce. So do we want them just to sit there and scare people away? Or do we actually, is there something in the contract that says you actually have to pull over speeders? And where does that money go?
Yeah, so there's, there's nothing in the contract that provides a quota or something, like we require you to bag X speeder today, or whatever. And then to your question about what revenues might come in, I believe that's governed by state law in terms of what revenue. So there's nothing in the contract specifically regarding that.
So I would not sign this contract if so, at any time.
Something to keep in mind, that when we had the sheriff before, it was that we found was ineffective, thus why it was stopped. Those speed control signs that we talked about with the big dumb car are very, I don't know, we had that before. When I was like, when Jared Mayhew and I kind of took turns moving that around, they're very portable. And I used to sit back and watch. And boy, you see the brake lights come on. Every time they come to that sign, that show their speed, the brake lights would come on. It's very effective. So again, the reason it was, we did not schedule a sheriff's coverage before, eight hours a week, that the change of regulations can affect you.
Yeah, I think Brent can corroborate this. The only time the town gets money is if someone is stopped on a town road. Then the town gets the money. If they're stopped on the state, then it's the state that gets the money.
That's correct.
Can I call the question and request a paper ballot?
At this point, we're still on the, the motion to postpone indefinitely. What we voted on was not to call the question on the postponed indefinitely. And we failed to do that. We have voted on postponed indefinitely. We failed to have a two-thirds special. We can, if, you know, if the people have had their say. On postponed indefinitely, there's, if there are two-thirds. If there's no objection, we can cease debate. On postponing indefinitely. Anybody have an objection? Which is easier than two-thirds.
We already did the two-thirds.
And we have, and it's okay. Now, if I ask if any objection, I'm asking for unanimous consent. If anybody objects, then we'll put it to the vote. If no one objects, we can vote on it on the, on the passover right now. No objection. Basically, we're voting on the postponed indefinitely, which is that the voters of the town of Montgomery authorize the select board to enter into a contract with the Franklin County Sheriff's Department for Police Services not to exceed an annual cost of $20,000, which is $31,200 for an 18-month period. All those in favor of passing over this article, please say aye. Those who say no?
No.
This is just a majority vote. I believe the ayes have it. Then the, we have voted to postpone indefinitely, Article 7. Article 8. Article eight. So the town vote to appropriate one million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars for contingency like there.
I make a motion for six hundred, one thousand, seven, oh, I don't know, for, yes, six hundred, one thousand, seven hundred.
No. Uh, wait.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. One million, six hundred, seventy-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-two.
Second?
Nope.
Second, no.
No, that was included, right?
Back out the contract.
If the move in second is that the town vote to appropriate one million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars for contingency like there.
Point, point of, point of order.
Yeah, just a, just a point of order on that, or it could be an amendment, I guess. But that number included the contract with the sheriff, so if we backed out the contract, it would be one million, six hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-two.
And back out conservation.
Yeah, and back out.
That's not contingent select board.
Want to make that amendment to the dollar figure?
So I will offer amendment to the dollar figure, the dollar figure be amended to one million, six hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-two. And that's reflective of backing out the Sheriff's Department contract.
Second.
Move in second is that we amend the dollar figure to be one million, six hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-two.
Forty-three.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Forty-three.
Forty-three.
One million, six hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-two.
Two.
Discussion on the amendment.
Can you repeat that number, please?
One million, six hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-two.
Thank you.
Discussion on the amendment.
I have one quick question, Mary Ann. We passed over that additional five hundred dollars for the MCA when we were, earlier for guys taking the name. So I wonder if we can then, this six, this figure to reflect that additional half from the MCA. I'm just, I'm sorry. No, just the one thousand is fine, I didn't understand, but it was only. Oh, okay, that was, so it'll work fine. I appreciate what you brought to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Discussion on the amendment, dial them up, anywhere?
Josh, I have just a question, if we amend the budget now, because that means the further, if we were to return to the question of the sheriff at a future meeting, that we, just to, to cause a thing happening, we would, we would effectively run it off.
Um, so Beth, me, if I can reiterate your question, I think the question had to do with if we back that out of the contingent select board, and if it was to be adopted, if the contract was to be adopted at a future meeting, how would that impact the finances to pay for the contract, is that correct? Yeah, so my initial response to that would be that if we back it out of the budget that we passed today, there'd be no money in that budget to support that contract, should we enter into it at a future date.
I don't know if we'd be able to amend.
Any discussion on the amendment?
The budget in the middle.
Alyssa Harden. And I was wondering, with this amount for this left board, that's including like all road maintenance? That that's itemized above, and wasn't in the past?
So just, just a reminder, that the contingent select board number is just anything that's not voted on individually at town meeting. So if you look at the budget spreadsheet, there are items that have asterisks next to the line number. So the budget page twenty-one through twenty-three, under expenses, if you look in the column next to the line number, there's items that have an asterisk. So the contingent select board is anything that does not have an asterisk. Asterix.
Same, yes.
Any other discussion on the amendment, amended number figure? If not, let's vote on the amendment to change the dollar figure in Article eight, that the town appropriate the sum of one million, six hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars for the contingent select board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? The object is that we amend Article eight to read, that the town vote to appropriate one million, six hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars for the contingent select board. Any discussion on the article as amendment? If not, we can go to the vote. If we see the vote, that the town vote to appropriate the sum of one million, six hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars for the contingent select board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? And the ayes have it, we voted to appropriate one million, six hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars for the contingent select board. Article nine, shall the town vote to approve a half-cent increase in the tax rate to be allocated to the Conservation Reserve Fund established by the voters in twenty eighteen, in accordance with twenty-four VSA twenty-eight oh four. Discussion?
Make a motion, Esther.
As red. Second?
Second.
Move in second is that the town approve a half-cent increase in the town tax rate to be allocated to the Conservation Reserve Fund established by the voters in twenty eighteen, in accordance with twenty-four VSA twenty-eight oh four. Discussion? Anyway. Mel?
I would condition also on page thirty-nine, we can see that they've got fourteen thousand, eight hundred already.
Okay, so just, just to clarify, Merle, the Conservation Commission budget is separate from the Conservation Reserve Fund, so.
One is not the.
Yeah, so just like the number, the Conservation Reserve Fund number should be on.
It was like eight hundred and seventy.
On page twenty, on page twenty-eight, you'll see, right now it's got sixteen hundred dollars plus change.
I'm not familiar with the fund, so what do you look to conserve?
Yeah, so this was passed in two thousand and eighteen. It's to create a dedicated fund to assist with the conservation of lands in the public interest. So things for natural resource values, recreation, essentially lands that would benefit the community. When it was passed, it was passed with the provision that every year, we would readdress this. It wasn't a fixed increase annually, so that's why it's back on the warning this year. Because every year, the voters have to approve it.
And what if you conserve thus far, give us an example?
We have not conserved anything thus far, because we only have sixteen hundred dollars in it. So the idea here is that annually, a small amount can be put in to essentially create a pot of money, should an opportunity arise, then the town could take advantage of it. Yep.
If we were to vote for a zero-set increase, is there some money going into the?
No.
Okay, that would get rid of all that.
Well, no, it wouldn't get rid of the money in the fund.
But you wouldn't be putting any in.
Yeah, yeah.
So on this theoretical two-hundred-thousand-dollar property, would that be five dollars or fifty dollars?
I don't understand.
I asked you to send increase on the two-hundred-thousand-dollar property, is how much?
It's a half-cent per thousand, so.
How the seven is fifteen now?
Yeah, but the tax rate, it's a half-cent. Millard rate, half-cent per thousand in property, though? Is that right?
Yeah, it's like eight hundred bucks for the entire tax base, so it's.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you're looking at like a buck or two. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Individual dollars.
So, Merle, to your question of how much it raised, in the past two years, it's raised about eight hundred bucks a year. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Then why would you just ask for eight hundred rather than?
So when the, when the fund was adopted in two thousand and eighteen, the adoption was based on a half-cent additional to the tax rate, so that's what it's been ever since, as it's put back on the warning.
In accordance with twenty-four VSA twenty-eight oh four.
Yeah.
Other questions? Now we can go to the vote. Article nine, the town vote to approve a half-cent increase in the tax rate to be allo, to be allotted to the Conservation Reserve Fund established by the voters in twenty eighteen, in accordance with twenty-four VSA twenty-eight oh four. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? The ayes have it, and we approve Article nine as red. Article ten, is there any other business property to be done?
I just wanted to take one moment before folks scatter here, just to recognize and thank two people that stepped into some pretty big roles this year. Liz and Erin both took on positions that were new to them, and they did it in a year where things got kind of crazy for adopting an eighteen-month budget. It's been, you know, like a brain roller coaster for the past three or four months, we figure out how to do this. So I just want to give a huge thanks to these two.
I'm asking this question that I asked last year. What are you guys doing about repaving the fire parking lot? But I suggested that you get money out of the garbage people. And I would like to know what the status is on that. And I'll ask again next year if you don't do a damn thing.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I think that if we're looking at behaving that, the expectation would be to be probably able to roll that into the bigger project around Main Street and the streetscape development. So when we look at going to bond, or to essentially approve an amount of money for that project, we try to include that in it. At least that's my expectation.
And so what's the timeline on that? When is that gonna happen?
The timeline on that at this point is unknown. You know, I think if we're looking at, if, if it gets passed and we move forward with things, we're looking at, I don't know, within a year, we see, we'd see actual dirt lanes start.
I'm asking again next year.
Okay.
Doesn't happen.
You can ask.
And I'm gonna keep asking.
Yep.
Because I hate that parking lot.
I know, I agree with you.
I would ask that the meeting applaud the select board for its dedicated service, and especially thank Darren Drebbett on the occasion of his retirement for the select board.
Hi, I'm the creative director for the Montgomery Center for the Arts. As you all know, I'm the biggest mountain in town. But what I would like to do is let you know that our furnace blew up, and we had twenty-four hours in order to get a brand-new one, or cancel ten to fifteen programs a week. And I'm standing here right now to let you know that we raised all the money that we needed from you guys, especially. And we have a brand-new furnace, and we have the best Wi-Fi in town. So now we need to open a workspace. So if you need Wi-Fi, you need a place to work, let us know. Thank you, guys.
I have a book for you, that is really good.
Yeah. Yes, I, Merle, I agree with you completely. That was a.
I didn't hear the question, can you repeat that?
So Merle, 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 hey, excuse me, folks, hey, so the meeting hasn't adjourned yet. You are welcome to leave if you want to, but if you're gonna have conversations outside of what's happening here, you just ask, you move it outside. So Merle's question or point was the fact that it is hard to hear and hear without microphones. So I want to apologize, I want to apologize for not checking that sooner, that the other portable mic, which we usually use for the audience, was not functional. So I apologize for that, and we'll have that remedied for next year.
Hey, Charlie?
Yeah.
Speaking of portable mics, given today's health issues, portable mics probably aren't a real good idea.
Help, you mean like?
Light down.
Oh, I got you, okay. I was gonna mean like radio signals.
I have information for you.
If it depends, thank you, just kind of ritual. As soon as time of the meeting for me to make a proposal for a resolution concerning whatever issue I feel has a painful character. And this year, I'm so disgusted with what's been going on. I moved, resolved that the voters of the town of Montgomery in response to the discourse coming from Washington, asked the question WTF.
There's a second.
There's a second.
So, so what, what, what was your?
Read it again, Barry, read it again.
Resolved that the voters of the town of Montgomery, in response to the discourse coming from Washington, asked the question WTF. Do you want me to?
No.
Aye. Those say no?
No.
The ayes have it, of course. Please, that's that fourth, that's right, of course. I've got a couple of others, I think you made a decision earlier, but basically, you can see that this, this meeting sort of tends toward the senior side. And, you know, I would ask anybody out there who's young, patriotic, as bigger, join the fire department. It's one of the best associations ever created by humans. We can see these people in front of us, we've had most of our town officials here today, between our select board and our board of civil authorities. The polls are open, they'll be open till Sunday tonight. So if you're not voting now, you have to go home and tell somebody in your family to call the wonderful seven. The other thousands against, I will not be ready for my work next year.
Yeah. You asked last, you asked last night.
I've just gotten too old and ill, and I just really can't do it. So thanks, you, it's been twenty-five years. Motion to adjourn, all in all. All those in favor, do you want to say aye?
Aye.
Those say no? We are adjourned.